Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda, I would like to take a moment to recognize Phoenix Police Officer Adrian Cruz. Adrian, would you like to stand, please? On August 16th, 2018, Officer Cruz made a traffic stop at Cactus and Cave Creek Road. As the officer approached the vehicle, the male driver started shooting at the officer and struck him in the chest. Officer Cruz engaged the suspect with gunfire, stopping him before he could further harm the officer or the community. In recognition of Officer Cruz's heroic actions, the National Association of Police Organizations have selected him as a winner of the prestigious Top Cops Award. Officer Cruz is one of only ten officers selected for this award from across the United States. Could we all give him a round of applause for his bravery? I want to thank you and your family. I met your wife at the hospital, lovely lady, and I'm glad to see you're well and back in uniform, and wish you the very best for the future, and we're so proud of you. Thank you for coming. Well, I also want to tell you that we need to recognize Phoenix Police Officer K-9, Officer Bain. Last April, Officer Bain was killed in the line of duty while trying to apprehend a suspect wanted for several felony crimes. In May, Officer Bain will be honored at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, and his name will be added there in recognition of him giving his life in the line of duty. Both of these recognitions will be held during Police Week in Washington, DC in May, and Police Jerry Williams will be honored to attend and be with our officers. So, thank you, and thank you, Chief. Okay, we will go to our regular, I believe it is... Does anyone have Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you, Mayor. It must be the season because there's a lot of bicycle rodeos going on throughout the district, probably throughout the city. And last Saturday, it was kicked off, North 32nd held their bike rodeo and party at Thirty-Touchay. And coming up, April 6th, starting at 8:30 a.m. in Palma Park, we're going to have our second annual slope fest and tour de sunny slope with the Bike Squad. And then, on April 13th, starting at 8:00 a.m., John Jacobs will have their bike rodeo with a pancake breakfast, and that'll be at John Jacob Elementary. Certainly is the perfect weather to be doing this, so I hope to see everyone turn out.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow evening, from 5:00 to 7:00, Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport is holding a public open house workshop for community members to learn about the comprehensive asset management plan. You will hear about the preferred development concepts and be given an opportunity to provide feedback. It will be at Gateway Community College in Community Room B. For more information, visit skyharbor.com/camp.
Has joined the meeting.
Also, I'm also pleased to announce that Eo Toto Mini Park will be receiving a facelift. Last month, we had a tree planting workshop at the park, and right now, the plans are still being drawn up, and we'll be sharing that information with the neighborhood and to ensure that it's to their liking. Also, yesterday, I had the pleasure of participating in the ribbon cutting for the downtown Thelda Williams Pop-Up Park. It was a fun event with lots of dogs running around, enjoying the green grass, so that was a lot of fun. And with that being said, I would also like to thank Mayor Williams for stepping in and doing an amazing job as an interim mayor. It has been great working with you, and I look forward to remaining time we have in the council together. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Flora, do you have someone? Councilman?
Oh, I too. I forgot, this is your last policy meeting today.
It is.
Congratulations on a job well done and the work that you've put in. You've shown some tremendous levels of success. We didn't agree on all of them, but the fact of the matter is you got it done. And in politics and in life, it's getting it done and, you know, getting it accomplished, and you were able to do that. So, I just want to commend you for that. It's been a very stable and a very good time that we've had here, and it's been very focused on the public, which you have done, and I just want to commend you for that.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I want to thank Councilwoman Noakowski, or Councilwoman, Councilwoman, don't tell him. Councilwoman Noakowski, Councilwoman Mendoza, and Ginger Spencer and Inger Erickson for the Pop-Up Park. I don't know if you come by there today, but it's been busy. It was flooded with dogs and people who live downtown, and very excited and very appreciative. And I just want to thank Petsmart Charity and all the work that you put into it, and I'm very honored. So, thank you very, very much. Want to remind you, Cactus Rinn Neighborhood is celebrating its 50th anniversary with a bike radio... Bike, I can't even talk today. Bike rodeo event and a big community fair. It will be at Cactus Rinn Elementary School, which is on 39th Avenue, just south of Dunlap. It will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Saturday, March 30th. There'll be carnival, food vendors, police, fire, and streets department, and we will have a bike rodeo where you can get free bike helmets, and there will be two bikes that are raffled off. And then, on April 6th, I'm going to remind everyone, it's Family Fishing Day at Cortez Park. Starts at 8:00 a.m., goes to noon, and we are partnering with Arizona Game and Fish and Phoenix Police, and we are inviting everyone over. The first hundred people will get free fishing license. And if you need help, we'll teach you how to fish, we'll teach you how to catch them, and then cook them. So, it should be a fun day, so we invite everybody out. And since this is my last policy meeting, I want to thank all of you. It has been an adventure, but I really appreciate all the support you've given me, and I think we did some major accomplishments along the way, and I've been very proud to serve in this capacity, and it has truly been an honor. So, thank you all very much, and I want to thank staff for all the support that I have received, the creative ideas, sometimes a push to keep me going in the right direction, but it's all greatly appreciated. So, thank you all very much. I just thank you for the Pop-Park. So, did you have anything you wanted to announce? Not rushing you, just...
Oh, no, no problem at all, thank you, Mayor. You know, Mayor, I just really want to thank everyone who came out last weekend to take back your neighborhood, and that was something that was sponsored by District 7, District 8, Councilwoman Mendoza, and just thank the Police Academy for opening up their doors and teaching us all the new training techniques that they have and technology that they're using and stuff. So, people really liked that. The other thing is on Fix... Fit Phoenix Fall Into the Fitness is starting today. So, it's a 10-week program, so we invite everybody to come out to Margaret Hands Park. It's going to be fun, it'll be interesting, and if you want to lose some of those pounds, come on down. It starts this evening. Also, we're going to have, tonight starts the Parks Department's meetings on the Code of Conduct, the results of all those meetings that they had throughout the cities. And ours, tonight, is at South Mountain Community Center at 6:00 p.m., so if you're able to come out, I hope to see you there. And Mayor, I just really want to thank you for your leadership, and we just had a great dog park that was opened yesterday. One of the things that our downtown area is growing, we have 16,000 units of housing in the downtown area. I've been a council member for 11 years, and it's just incredible to see how our downtown area has grown. And one of the things that people are asking is for all the different amenities that the rest of our city has, from a grocery store that we finally have, and now they were asking for a dog park. And we had the privilege and the honor to have that dog park named after a big advocate of animals, and that was our mayor, Thelda Williams. So, Thelda, congratulations on the naming of a dog park, and continue advocating for all of our furry friends that are out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody else find it strange that Thelda actually thanked us for making her life much worse than it actually needed to be? I don't know, maybe it's me. But in any case, thank you, Councilwoman Noakowski. I'm going to call on myself to announce there will not be a consent agenda today, and Penny, there's no executive session call. All right, so I think that is... Over to Ed for reports and budget updates, unless you want to take a pass.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, we will pass.
Can I say something?
Oh. I'll defer to Councilwoman Pastore.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pastore, did you have something to say?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Thelda for her leadership and appreciate... She led with grace, she also led with toughness, and really appreciate what she has done for the city, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your support and your help. We are now... Ed, I believe this is your show.
Mayor, thank you very much. There, since the whole item is really budget reports, we'll just go straight to that. As our folks are coming forward, I would echo the remarks of your colleagues, and on behalf of all of our employees, thank you, Mayor Williams, for your leadership during this interim period. We've been honored to serve you and the City Council, and will continue because you continue with the council, so we look forward to continued work with you, but thank you on behalf of the employees of Phoenix. With that, we are going to have today three important items. We're going to start with the Capital Improvement Program, which we call the CIP, and then move from there into our budget and to discuss some pension. So, here today to talk about the Capital Improvement Program is our Budget Director, Jeff Barton, and a Deputy Budget Director, Chris Fazio, who works on our capital programs. With that, I'll just turn it straight to Jeff.
Mayor, Members of the Council, good afternoon. Today's first presentation is going to be on our CIP, our Preliminary Capital Improvement Program, which spans next fiscal year through '23-'24. And so, again, over the last year and a half to two years, this council has been exceedingly excited about infrastructure, maintenance, and repair. And so, I think you'll see that theme throughout both presentations today, especially in today's presentation on the CIP. So, the CIP is an infrastructure and maintenance-driven plan, for the most part. It's a $6.6 billion program. The first year of that program is about $1.6 billion. 709 total projects, and Chris can hold up the entire document, so you can see how big it is. We're not going to go through each program, or we'd be here for hours and hours. But again, we do have an extensive CIP. We also are excited because the CIP, it leverages not just city funds, but it also leverages federal funding as well. And, you know, according to a recent study, about $1 billion worth of investment in highways creates about 13,000 jobs and funds about 13,000 jobs for a year. So, we're talking about a $6.6 billion program, so we're going to be exceeding that 13,000 jobs. So, again, I'm going to pass it over to Chris, and he'll walk you through some more of the particulars.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The CIP is infrastructure-driven, as we mentioned. About 85% of the budget is associated with the water, transit, wastewater, streets, and aviation programs. The remainder of the programs account for about 13% of the total CIP. When we talk about the trial budget in a moment, the focus will be on the general fund. For the CIP, the general fund is a fairly small segment, $97 million. This is actually a substantial increase over prior years, though. So, with this budget cycle, we've pivoted major maintenance projects for general fund facilities out of the operating budget and into the CIP. That's part of a larger effort to centralize the prioritization of these projects, as well as management and tracking. Geo-bond funds that are remaining are minimal, about $4 million. So, the majority of the CIP funding is restricted funds. Special revenue funds, like state shared highway user revenues, enterprise funds like water and convention center, other bond funds that are backed by these restricted funds, and other capital...
Followed by town. Has left the meeting.
And other capital funds like development impact fees. So, again, we won't go over all 700 of the projects today, of course, just to highlight a few examples. Per the direction of Mayor and Council, we've included $200 million in Transportation 2050-backed bonds to accelerate pavement maintenance efforts. The aviation program includes a new south concourse at Terminal 4 of Sky Harbor Airport. The $1.7 billion water program includes extensive work towards water transmission and water resources. The facilities program includes efforts to mitigate facilities deficiencies that are identified through comprehensive citywide facility assessments efforts. And finally, the transit program includes both bus rapid transit and light rail extension projects. The detail of all 700 of the projects, including brief descriptions of each, is available on the phoenix.gov/budget website. Today's presentation is for information purposes only. Again, this was very high-level detail, but extensive detail is available online. Between now and the next couple of months, staff will be updating the project descriptions and information that you've seen here for carryovers, for updated cost estimates, and then we'll come back to you in June with the final CIP adoption. Along by adoption of the tentative capital budget, and then final capital budget adoption later in June, and property tax adoption in July. With that, we can take your questions.
Anyone have a question? Stark?
Thank you. I think a couple weeks ago, Mario shared a report with us on public pedestrian fatalities, public safety. I was looking in the street CIP portion, and on page 148, it sets aside $1 million for pedestrian safety issues. I'm just wondering if we may need to bump that up. And one of the other things in the report that was given to us, it talked about medians as a tool to help with mid-block crossings. I don't think we can put hawks everywhere, so perhaps we can look at medians as another alternative. I know I have a particular street that would like to see the medians for the safety reasons, and that's what they mentioned, was try to help slow down traffic and control that center line traffic. So, if we could look at that, I would really appreciate it. I did alert Keeney that I would bring this up, so thank you.
Hi, I have a request. And in addition to that, I'd also like to ask staff to actually research potential options that would accelerate the installation of hawks, of the high-intensity activated crosswalks in areas we know that have a high number of pedestrians struck by vehicles, and provide that information to council, please. Thank you.
Councilman Noakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to dittle that also. We're seeing out in the Levine area, a lot of individuals that are having accidents out there because they're crossing in different areas of the street that's not marked. So, if we could really go out there and listen to the community, because what we found out on 39th Avenue Southern is that they didn't want a hawk light, that they actually needed a traffic light in that area. So, I think it's really important that we have these community meetings, we listen to the community to talk about pedestrian safety crossing the streets, and then, so it turns out that we're going to put a traffic light in there.
Has joined the meeting.
Yes, Laurie, has just joined the meeting. So, thank you very much.
Mayor, Members of the Council, we will work on a more robust pedestrian safety program in our CIP, bring that back to you and make that as... Review that with each of you, and then make that as part of our final CIP presentation. Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. Are we on to the next item? The trial budget?
Mayor, absolutely. We will move to the next item, which is the 2019-2020 trial budget, and we are happy to be here today to review that with you. With the council's diligence in keeping our spending in line with our revenues, our employees' dedication to spending wisely and a good economy, the budget can support added investments in people and programs for a stronger Phoenix. Ten years after the Great Recession, and with a decade of hard work behind us, to bring our spending in line with our revenues, we have a structurally balanced budget, which in this case and in our five-year forecast shows that our expenses are less than our revenues right now. And in fact, we actually have some resources available to use carefully to provide sustainable employee compensation increases, restore some of the programs that were reduced during the Great Recession and the decade after, and even add some new priorities from the council. This year's trial budget additions provide continuity from previous year's budget dialogue with residents. For example, Fire Station 55 in North Phoenix and Fire Station 58 in Southwest Phoenix were able to provide resources, and that has been with lots of dialogue from the community. The last year, we heard a lot about traumatic incident, and Mayor, you appointed an ad hoc committee with several council members leading that, and the results of that are shown in this budget. The age-friendly community dialogue we've had over the last couple of years, where we find ways to support the elders in our community, there are some additions in here that reflect that work. Continuing to restore library hours, we hear that quite a bit. Participatory budgeting requests, that is, people asking how they can get more involved in specifically allocating dollars, and you'll hear about a trial program in that. And then, resources to address the impacts of homelessness in our community. Of course, as we've discussed the past five years, the single biggest challenge to a sustainable, structurally balanced budget is our pension liability. And this budget proposes 10% of our surplus to go to continue to provide resources, to provide reserves to address the pension aspect of employee compensation. And now, as we walk through the trial budget additions, I would note there are several major priorities that we've already begun addressing after earlier council actions. We heard some of them in our Capital Improvement Program presentation. But outside of this trial budget, we have a street paving program that the council accelerated. We have significant investment in water infrastructure that the council has put in place. We are upping our investment in our facilities and our vehicle replacement, particularly in public safety, but throughout our system. And we continue to hire police officers to work towards our budgeted goal of 3,125 sworn officers. We are now at 2,994, which I think is our highest level since the mid-2000... Since 2015, and we continue to hire, we're open for business for hiring. Chief Williams will take applications during this meeting or after. She's always looking for people who want to be good police officers. I want to thank the council for your leadership in bringing us to being in this position to support our people and programs that create a strong community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Budget and Research Director Jeff Barton, who will walk you through this trial budget, and then we'll take any questions or comments that you might have.
Mayor, Members of the Council, today's presentation on the trial budget will be quite extensive, but I'll try and keep it moving. We'll primarily focus on these five areas. Number one, we're going to talk about the trial budget in terms of what it is, what it means, how we put it together. We're also going to talk about a recap of what we talked about two weeks ago on March 5th, when we talked about the five-year forecast and the general fund status, where we talked about that $55 million surplus. I'm also going to walk you through the general fund proposed additions, the non-general fund proposed additions, and then we'll conclude with our budget calendar and our next steps. So, again, what is the trial budget? Well, the trial budget is our first step to adopting that balanced budget that is required by both state statute and city charter, and it's also our first attempt to get your feedback, as well as the feedback of the community, on the things that we're talking about changing relative to the suite of services that we currently provide. Again, the foundation of the trial budget, what it's based on or predicated on, is the existing level of services that you have already approved, the services that our citizens have come to depend on, the services that our employees love to provide. The change, or the things that we're adding or proposing to be adding, are based on those available resources. And again, I go back to the $55 million that we talked about two weeks ago. Again, this trial budget, one of the many feathers in our cap as far as our budget process, is that this trial budget comes out a full two months before there's any action on the budget, and that exceeds what most of our peers do. And in fact, it's three months before the actual first... Before the final adoption of the actual budget. So, two months before we actually have our first action, and three months before our final adoption process. So, that provides the community and the elected officials with ample opportunity to weigh in on what they like and don't like about our budget. So, again, going back two weeks ago, we talked about our status. So, we, at that point in time, we walked you through a very detailed five-year forecast, and for 1920, we projected that our revenues or our resources, total resources, which include our beginning and ending fund balance, were going to be $1.397 billion. That's billion with a B. We also expected or projected that our expenditures were going to be $1.342 billion. So, that left us with a surplus of $55 million. At that time, we broke that surplus into two components, one of which being our ongoing, the amount of money that was available to provide for ongoing costs and ongoing services, and that was about $35 million. And then, we also said that there was some one-time money in that amount, and that was a $20 million amount. That doesn't avail itself to being spent ongoing, but it does allow us to address some one-time needs, either from an employee base as well as our services. And we'll walk you through how we propose to spend all of that today. The other thing, as the city manager mentioned, we were excited about the five-year forecast highlighted that we are structurally balanced, meaning that our incoming revenues on an annual basis are enough to sustain and support the programs that we currently deliver. So, again, that's a kudos to the hard work that you've put forward and staff as well. So, again, by way of comparison, the current year budget, total resources, was $1.31 billion. As compared to next year, $1.397 billion. So, that's an increase of $87 million. That increase is largely driven by the following items. A $40 million increase in local revenue, which is, again, driven by the healthy economy. $36 million increase in state shared revenues. Again, as I expressed to you last week, that is largely driven by the state shared income taxes that we'll be receiving. And then, there's also $7 million increase from the primary property tax. So, even though, again, we are planning to drop our rate, we will levy more and collect more in taxes because of home appreciation. And then, finally, there's also, the user fees are up about $4 million. So, that accounts for all $87 million of that increase. Now, from an expenditure standpoint, again, in the current fiscal year, because we have to have a balanced budget, our expenditures match the resources for the current fiscal year. But next year, our expenditures are proposed to be about $32 million more than the current year expenditures. And again, those are... We broke those down for you last week, or two weeks ago, but just to remind you of what those are. $11 million is an increase in the PSPRS, or the Public Safety Pension. $4 million is an increase in the civilian COPERS Pension System. $7 million that we intentionally increased to fund public safety vehicles based on the long discussion that we've had with you relative to public safety critical fleet. We also included the $2 million increase for body-worn cameras, which you approved by council back in February. And then, the final $3 million increase is to the contingency, increasing it from $52 to $55 million. And so, again, when you compare those all together, you have a balanced budget for this fiscal year and our $55 million surplus for next fiscal year. So, again, as Ed mentioned, the $55 million in surplus allows us to address a couple of different items. We've got six key areas that we're really addressing, that we're able to address strategically and sustainably with this $55 million. Those items include employee compensation, public safety, neighborhood preservation and revitalization, community services, infrastructure maintenance, and census. And I'll walk you through each of those now. So, again, based on our conversation with council as we've gone through the labor negotiations process, as well as last year's budget process, as well as feedback from the community, we know with the $55 million, we've got to find the right balance, the right mix of how we allocate those dollars between our employees, as well as our citizens that depend on services. So, what we've come up with is a 70/30 split. 70% of our surplus going to employees, with 60% of that being for employee compensation. And then, as the city manager mentioned, 10% of our surplus being allocated to public safety pension. And then, the final 30% of that surplus is being allocated to services for residents. So, that's about $39 million for employees and roughly $16 million for our services to our residents. So, as we walk through this, we've long said, and I think you've said this, that City of Phoenix employees are one of our most valuable resources. And as such, this trial budget, what it does is it allocates 70% or $39.6 million of our general fund surplus to employee compensation and pension, with $34.1 million going to employee compensation. And now, the way that's broken out, $22 million or so is being allocated to direct employee compensation out of our ongoing resource, and roughly $12.5 million being allocated from our one-time resource. And then, again, $1 million to pension out of our ongoing, and $4.5 million from our one-time. The way we'd like to allocate the pension dollars is 1%, or $1 million would actually go into our pension reserve fund, and that would be an annual allocation into the reserve. So, that would be consistent with the way we currently fund the general fund contingency. And then, the other $4.5 million could be sent directly to PSPRS as a payment toward our unfunded liability. Also, in public safety, again, this, the... Also in public safety, again, this, the council, as well as our community, has long said that public safety is its primary number one priority for the city, and this budget reflects that sentiment. It reflects that sentiment in our ability to continue to hire police and fire officers, firefighters. This budget provides for police and fire to actually achieve and maintain their sustainable numbers that we've talked about over the last couple of years. So as the city manager mentioned, for police, that's an increase of about 130 officers over where we currently sit today, over the coming months. But what we've also done is, based on our conversation with you, as well as what we've heard from the community, public safety doesn't just end and begin with police and fire. There are other programs, other departments that add to public safety. And so as, in this budget, you'll see additions for human services, public defender, law, and other departments. And I'll walk you through all of these additions over the next three slides. So on fire, the primary focus is on response times. So last year, in the budget, we began the allocation for Station 55, which is located at I-17 and Joe Maxx. What this budget does is it adds the final eight positions that are needed to get that station up and running in the next few months. Also, Station 58, which is located at 47th Avenue and Dobbins. This budget allocates $878,000 to equip a full-time rescue to enhance response times in that particular area. Also, based on your feedback and based on the ad hoc group that Deanna and Councilwoman Pastore worked very hard on, we are, your recommendation was to add an additional crisis response unit to fire, so this budget includes that. That will enable fire to respond more efficiently and more effectively to crisis as it pertains to the calls that they roll on. And then finally, the annual facilities program. This is shown as a no cost here because there's no cost to the general fund. These positions are actually charged to the Development Services Fund and recovered through fees. But what this does is allow fire to actually have additional inspectors out there, making sure that all buildings are safe and in compliance with the fire code. So in total, fire gets about $2.5 million of the surplus allocation. And now we move on to police. As I, again, I mentioned, this budget does allow for police to continue hiring. We're currently at 2,994 officers. So over the next few months, we've got to pick up about 130 to get to that sustainable number of 3,125. This budget allows and provides that. But what we're also doing in this budget is focusing on civilian support staff. A lot of these additions that you'll hear about over the next few moments are positions that will enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of the police department without adding officers, but adds efficiency and response time to the officers by giving them their time back. The first item is a mandated change from the FBI. A few years ago, the FBI mandated that all law enforcement jurisdictions convert from uniform crime reports to NIBRs. And they have to do that by 2021. The police department needs additional positions to make that change because these reports that are going to be required going forward are much more labor intensive than the ones we currently have. So we're adding some positions here to start them on that process. Now, it's very possible that additional positions are needed beyond this. This is really just the first step. Also, central booking. We've been working at central booking for quite a while now. This illustrates phase one of probably three phases, so two more phases to follow after this. This adds 13 positions to central booking and it allows the police department to begin steps to make central booking a citywide process by civilianizing it, completely civilianizing it. A recent study that they conducted in the Mountain View Precinct, they were able to reduce, they were able to reduce the booking time by 50%. So if that were to actually translate across the entire city, you'd have that much more time that officers would be on the street rather than booking prisoners. Also, in the lab, we're adding additional staff. Over the, during the recession, police, where they cut most was during, it was in the lab, as well as in dispatch. So we're trying to add some of those positions back to the lab. This will actually help them with our crime scene response, as well as dealing with their backlog of cases in the actual crime lab. So this is a good addition for them as well. Also, on the police side, there's also an addition for the traumatic event. So this will assist them for crisis response as it pertains to the neighborhood groups. So if there's an incident, they can bring folks out and they can have actual engagement with the, with the community, and as well as de-escalation training for our police officers was also included in that. That was part of your recommendation back in February as well. Again, roughly $2.5 million being allocated to police as well. But in addition, we talked about public safety. There are additions that go beyond police and fire, so we'll talk about those for a moment. In human services, we're adding a caseworker to provide additional crisis response, as well as victims advocacy and outreach at about $100,000. We're also adding two positions in the public defenders office to address veterans' health and mental health issues with individuals that have those types of issues. We're also adding library security. So seven municipal security guards are being added to ensure that all libraries during all hours of operation have security. And in law, we're adding two programmers to actually help them implement and maintain their new case management system that they're currently implementing. This is showing no cost here as well because the costs are charged to the project and the project is currently budgeted. Cybersecurity, that's something that's been in the news. The city of Atlanta was taken down by a cyber threat and held hostage. The cost of that to them was about $2.6 million to remediate. So we're adding about six positions here to actually beef up and thwart cyber attacks with the city of Phoenix. And then retirement board support, this is really, as it pertains to our police and fire departments, they sometimes need help as it pertains to navigating the retirement process with disability issues and other types of things. So we're adding an administrative position there to help them navigate that process. So in total, about $6.5 million is being allocated to public safety of our surplus. Next, neighborhood preservation and revitalization. Healthy neighborhoods are a key component to any major city that has a great quality of life. And I think this trial budget illustrates the city's commitment to ensuring that we have great neighborhoods and we have vibrant neighborhoods. So we're focusing on things for neighborhood services, parks, solid waste streets, as well as planning and development. First up, neighborhood specialists. So we're going to add a neighborhood specialist and a lead neighborhood specialist or a neighborhood specialist supervisor. What these individuals will be tasked with will be working with that over 1,000 neighborhood groups that NSD has to interact with to ensure that those neighborhoods are healthy, that they're maintained, and that they keep blight away. We're also converting eight CDBG-funded inspectors from CDBG funding to general fund. What we're hoping here is that by moving those from CDBG to the general fund, you free up CDBG funding to allow them to address more projects. But it also takes those inspectors and makes them citywide. So rather than only being able to work in a targeted area, they're now able to work citywide. So that should have a significant impact on response times. And then in parks, we started this last year. We've been trying to slowly grow the parks department, the Flatland Park Rangers. So in this budget, we're adding eight park rangers and one park ranger, park manager. This actually takes the parks department up to park ranger levels that predate the recession. And it actually restores about 80 hours worth of activity from a park ranger standpoint to the park system. Also, park activation, we're adding staff and equipment so that the parks department can actually activate parks that don't have a lot of activity currently. So what this will allow them to do is to actually make the parks attractive to folks, make people come in, have opportunities for kids to play, as well as adults. And that also will be a deterrent to crime. And then finally, neighborhood cleanups. This was something that we added last year based on some of the community feedback. We added two teams, one in streets and one in solid waste, to help with a cleanup of homeless encampments in washes and right of ways. That was funded temporarily or on a pilot program out of the solid waste fund. Now we're moving that into the general fund because solid waste funds are not available beyond this fiscal year to sustain that program. And then finally, we're adding $75,000 to historic preservation. What this will do is it will allow HP, the Historic Preservation Office, to continually work toward making sure they have a full inventory of their historic properties, as well as to provide the resources that they need to actually maintain those facilities. So in total, we got about $3.5 million, about $3.5 million for neighborhood preservation and revitalization. The next item is community services. Again, kind of along the same lines of neighborhood preservation, an engaged community is a healthy community. So we're seeking to elicit additional community engagement by focusing on library, parks, human services, arts, and city council and the mayor's office on a trial basis. Sunday library hours. So this was something that we hear about every single year, restoring our library hours. During the recession, we had to cut way back on library hours. We're actually able to add library hours back to the four remaining branches that don't have Sunday library hours with this budget, with this $400,000. Also, Phoenix Teen Program. This is another opportunity for the parks department to engage our disadvantaged youth or our underserved youth by taking the parks and park programs to them. This affords them the opportunity to do more volunteering, job training, as well as other types of activities in the parks where they otherwise wouldn't have been able to. This actually gives parks additional oversight now over what they currently have. Elderly case management. So again, this is adding two caseworkers. And again, this is consistent with what the city manager talked about, a commitment to things that we've already started, age-friendly communities. So these would be two caseworkers that will be assigned to working exclusively with elderly population and also elderly homeless population to ensure that they can find and maintain sustainable housing. And then finally, increasing $25,000 for youth grants for the arts program, for underserved arts programs for youth. And participatory budgeting is something that we want to try. So last year, we heard a lot about traumatic incidents. We also heard a lot about participatory budgeting. So what we'd like to do in this trial budget is propose $25,000 to each council district and $50,000 to the mayor's office, so that you can engage your constituents to identify programs and projects that you would like to fund through a competitive process or through some other type of process that you oversee. So the funding would be at your discretion, the recommendations would be totally yours, and this would be on a trial basis. Depending upon the results, it could be expanded to much larger scale in future budget years. And so that rounds out the community services at about $1.3 million. And again, infrastructure maintenance. We've talked about public safety maintenance for the past year and a half. We've been focusing on infrastructure for a really long time. Our public works department during the recession was extensively cut, and I think you can see that in some of our facilities in terms of the age that we're starting to show. But now we're starting to reinvest in those facilities at your direction. And this budget perpetuates that. So first, we're going to do is add $1.3 million in general funds for street landscape maintenance. And so what this does is it allows for newly developed areas to be maintained, the street landscaping, as well as landscaping around, along the Grand Canal. But it also increases the frequency of the right-of-way landscape maintenance from three times a year to four times a year. So that's an actual big improvement. And then in parks, we're actually adding a position and a buyer to actually maintain parks facilities, sports facilities, and cultural facilities. Because again, those are some of the things that, over the years, were also impacted as a result of lack of funding during the Great Recession. And then finally, public works. We're adding 23 positions, equipment, and necessary supplies to actually affect the facility maintenance program that we're actually embarking on. So as you know, they're going through a facilities assessment program where they're going to do a complete top-to-bottom assessment of all city facilities. Once those assessments come back, they're going to need additional staff to actually work and maintain those facilities. And these positions will be critical to that success. So overall, $2.9 million for infrastructure and maintenance. And then finally, the general, the last general fund to add is census. We've talked about this extensively for over a year. We're allocating $1.3 million of the general fund surplus. This is the one-time component of the surplus to enhance and make sure that we are counted, to make sure that Phoenix is counted. Phoenix's livelihood going forward from a state share revenue standpoint, as well as from a federal funding standpoint, depends on an accurate count. So this $1.3 million will go a long way to ensure that that actually happens. So in summary, the general fund additions, so employee compensation, I mentioned two components. 22.6 going for, out of the ongoing bucket, and 17 million out of the one-time, so a total of 39.6. Public safety, the $6.5 million that I walked you through. Neighborhood preservation and revitalization, $3.5 million. Community services, $1.3 million. And infrastructure and maintenance. I just realized I have a typo on my slide. And finally, all $55 million of our surplus. On the non-general fund side, and I'll go through this really quickly, we have about nine departments that have non-general fund additions. Most of those additions are converting grants, funded positions to regular positions. But there are three areas that I want to highlight for you. First is planning and development. We have 19 positions that are being added at a total of $1.8 million. This is really just to keep up with the pace of the development, the permits that Alan is seeing on a daily basis. Also in streets, again, this $200 million accelerated pavement maintenance program that we have, we've got 11 positions and $768,000. And then in water services, we're adding 21 positions to make sure that they adequately maintain their 91st Avenue treatment facility, as well as making sure that they're actually leveraging additional technologies so that they can work forward on efficiencies for bill reading and meter reading. And so that's about 21 positions and $3.1 million. And with that, we start our budget hearings on April 2nd, come back to you on May 7th with the city manager's budget, and we go through the rest of our process in June. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have questions? Councilman, Cecilia?
Just, just a couple, Jeff, if I don't mind. Great presentation. On that $25,000, I know it's a small part of the budget, but you know, it's really a council office slush fund to some degree. So what I would do is I would put some sort of barrier in there that during an election year, you can't use that because then that becomes basically part of somebody's campaign, giving it to the neighborhood groups or things like that, you know what I mean? There has to be some other step in there, maybe going to the village planning committee, something like that. We used to have something like, you know, we used to be able to direct some of the funds at one point, but if it's not competing with all the other funds, then you're setting a pretty bad precedent. It needs to compete with everything that's out there, just as a thought. But I would definitely, during an election year, put some sort of controls on that.
Anyone else?
Can I have a que, can I make a statement?
Sure, go ahead, Councilwoman Pastore.
So if any, if you understand participatory budgeting and you understand the concept of participatory budgeting, it's about the community participating as to where their dollars are going within their community. And this is something that has been asked for, for the last two or three years, specifically last year regarding what the process is in the budget and what communities wanted but necessarily didn't make it to the budget. And so this is one way of looking at how communities can engage with public dollars or their dollars. Now, I don't disagree with Councilwoman Cecilia in the possibility of someone getting into council and wanting to leverage on a campaign, you know, because that's the possibility. I don't think anybody that sits at the dais would do that currently, but that would be something to look at, or possibly, or maybe what we could look at is developing a committee regarding guidelines around participatory budgeting. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman, Cecilia?
Thank you, Mayor. I like the statement that you have or the theme of investing in people. Can you hear me now? All righty. I like the slogan, "Investing in people and programs for a stronger Phoenix." One of the things that we heard over and over is that from 2010 to now, we lost a lot of our programs and that we needed to invest back into the youth centers, the after-school programs, the senior centers, and our libraries especially. So I'm really happy to see that. I'm really glad to see that the park rangers, one of the things that we talk about is safety after hours, and it's really those park rangers that drive around and protect our flatland parks and our mountain preserves. So I'm really happy to see that you included the park rangers and increasing that and activities. Also, the neighborhood, addressing the neighborhood encampments. One of the things that we've been hearing a lot of is that there's encampments out there. So I'm glad that you left that money, it's in there and it's still budget for this year. So you know, and the other thing too is that having that ambulance, I know that Councilmember Mendosa was advocating strongly for an ambulance out there in Levine area, and I'm very glad to see that in there. Also, one of the things that I like is the pedestrian safety infrastructure, you know, with the new crosswalks and designs and the hock lights and all that. Those are the things that we're hearing throughout the city that as our city's growing bigger and we have multi-trans, public transportation from light rail to buses, and then we have cars, and we have bikes on streets, and now we're even talking about scooters, you know, just making sure that our streets are, are safe. You know, just making sure that our streets are safe and that the pedestrians that are using it understand the safe way of using our streets. So I just really want to thank the staff for listening to the community, listening to the different council members and making sure that all of our opinions were actually put into the budget. I know that once we go out to the budget hearings, you're going to hear a lot more. And I know that there's ways of moving things around and like we always do. So I want to thank you all for listening and putting those items that I think are important. You know, one of the things that we heard and take back our neighborhood, we were out there last weekend at the Police Training Center campus, is that that facility needs a little overhaul too. So we need to look at some of the funding to making sure that if we're going to have 300 officers recruited, that those facilities are up to standards. And I know that we have some new technology that we're putting in there, but the buildings and the courses and all that. And I know that some of the, if we can sit maybe and talk to the individuals that are running that center to see what are the needs to making sure that those 300 new recruits have the best facility to train from. With that, that's really it. Thank you, Mayor.
We do have a card, Greta? Oh, sorry. Okay, real quick, and then Greta.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of great things here in the budget. And I just want to say thank you for adding the ambulance to Levine. The 202 is going to open December 20th, so just a few months. So that's, and there's more rooftops there are being, you know, under construction right now. So an ambulance, it's needed in Levine. I have a question about the Phoenix Teens Program. Will this now cover the summer? Because in the past, it wasn't. So I just want to make sure that it's covering the summer months because that's when we are asked, most of the times, with our neighborhood groups, about bringing these vans out.
We'll ask Parks and Recreation Director Inger Erikson to address that proposed addition.
Mayor, Councilwoman Mendoza. Phoenix Teens is the program that happens in the community centers. And so it's different than the mobile recreation. It is actually the stuff that's in the centers.
My understanding, though, is that we were going to look at that in this budget, though.
So currently, that isn't one of the things that is in the budget, but that's something certainly we can put some numbers together for if that's what you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, to follow up with that question. Last year in the Levine area, I know that some of the charter schools and some of the schools opened up their gyms for us to actually use. And then we provided some of our staff to have summer programs. I think that's what we're referring to, Councilmember Mendoza, is that there'll be some funding for that. Because we have high schools, like Caesar Chavez High School. We have Betty Fairfax and some other schools that have the facilities. But what they don't have is the staff to actually create a summer program for young people, not just in the Levine but throughout the city.
Thank you. Sorry, Greta Rogers?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Williams. My name is Greta Rogers. And I wanted to say to Jeff and to Ed, this is a well-thought-out, comprehensive budget in meeting the obligations with public health and safety of the entire community primary. It also covers with great adequacy and foresight the needs of streets and all public rights-of-way, neighborhood services, from garbage and trash collection and disposal to provision of parks and recreation and library services. The debt ratio, Mr. DeCecio, is more than four to one in this budget. And you and I both know that the required ratio, ideally in real estate purposes for sale or purchase, is three to one. So we're well beyond that, and your criticisms are baseless. And I brought Time Magazine with me, the new edition, which has...
We can't hear you.
Time Magazine's new edition, on the cover, has a caricature of our infamous president. But it also reminds me of you, Sal. I suggest you look at it. We are incredibly blessed to have the most intelligent finance director in Phoenix history and probably one of the most intelligent finance directors in the whole country, who along with our very responsible, capable, and intelligent and dedicated city manager has brought this city back to parity from the worst financial depth in my lifetime here that we ever experienced with the crash of October '08. My hats are off to both Ed and his team and to Jeff and his team. And if you people up there could measure up to that level, I would compliment you also, but as yet, none of you has earned it. I want to thank you, staff, for your work in helping Jeff put this budget together. And I urge unanimous passage forthwith. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. To the item on the census, so I think you added $1.3 million to that. So we're voting tomorrow on an additional, what, $3 million? Is this all part of that?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the item on tomorrow's agenda is a contract. The contract amount is $3 million. The actual expenditure for tomorrow is less than $200,000. This portion in the budget would be some of the resources we would put into funding that $3 million, but another portion of that is coming from the region. It's a contract that others in the region are going to use in addition to our own funding of that contract.
But it's $3 million tomorrow, $200,000 of ours, and then the region puts it in. But that's primarily for marketing, but is it related to this at all?
It's a portion, I'm sorry, if you go back to that slide. I think, Jeff, what is it, some of the census? $1.3 million of this, of which some amount is going towards that contract.
Right. I believe our total amount from MAG is $500,000.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I want to echo the comments. You've done a great job putting this together in a very comprehensive way that has addressed each one of us and the community's questions and comments for the past year. So great work, Jeff and Denise and all the other staff that helped put this together. Thank you. Brings us to item three, and I have a potential conflict, so I will turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Item three.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We've talked about the capital program, we've talked about the budget, and we want to talk about a much longer-term issue. It underlies all of our financial security and stability, and that has to do with our pension systems. Our Chief Financial Officer, Denise Olson, is here. This is responding to a new state law that requires the council to adopt a couple of things. Denise will explain that, and in doing that, we want to lay the foundation of our existing pension systems and the funding that we have for them. So with that, I'll turn it over to Denise.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. So today, we're going to talk about a pension funding strategy. And so we're going to start with what the state law requires of us. We're going to give you some background information on where we're at financially for both of our pension plans. We're going to talk about some possible policy considerations, and then we'll make some recommendations and answer questions. So first, I want to talk about the state law. This was passed last year. And so with the state law, it requires us to basically formally accept all of our assets and liabilities associated with our pension plans. And also, we need to post this policy on our website by July 1st of 2019. Although the state law only applies to PSPRS, staff is recommending that we apply it to both of our pension plans. So as you know, we have two pension plans in the city of Phoenix. One is for our public safety personnel, Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. We also call that PSPRS. Right now, we have about 4,000 active members and about 4,500 retirees. As far as the funding percent, right now, police is at 40.7% funded, fires at 42.2% funded, and the total unfunded liability is about $3 billion. The second retirement system is COPERS, which is the city of Phoenix's employer retirement system. There's about 8,000 employees, active employees in that plan, and about 7,200 retirees. Right now, we're at 60.64% funded, and there's about $1.7 billion as far as an unfunded pension liability. So Mayor, City Council, you have taken a lot of actions over the last several years to really help fund our pension plans. Just last year, you made a commitment to continue to pay 100% of our annual required contribution. You also adopted a 25-year amortization period, which allowed us to do a couple of different things. Number one, continued to provide high-quality services to our citizens. Also, allow us fair compensation for employees. And then last, and probably in my mind, most important, we were able to establish a pension reserve fund. And currently, we have $35 million in this reserve fund. It is only for PSPRS and will help us if there's a downturn in the economy. The last thing you did was we were able to free up about $70 million of a cash from the wastewater enterprise fund, and that allowed us to make an advance payment to COPERS. So if you remember, I showed this chart last year. And so for police and fire, this is a chart that shows our funding percent. And even though there's a downward trend, you can see over the last year, it's stabilized. So it's remained somewhat flat. So we are making some improvements in terms of our funded percent. If you look at COPERS, over the last two years, we've seen our funded percent increase. So again, this is because of council actions, voter-approved pension reform, and some of the other things paying attention to these two plans. I think it's important for us to compare ourselves to the 10 largest cities. This is a national issue. And so in this chart, I'm going to go ahead and click through it all. The higher the bar, the better. So for example, the first bar is San Antonio. They're roughly 80% funded. The colors of the bar are representing the Moody's ratings. So San Antonio is a AAA-rated entity. Notice that Phoenix is a AA1. I want to point out that we are on a negative outlook, and one of the reasons is because of our pension burdens. You also see Houston, Philadelphia, and Dallas. And I want to point out that those cities have issued pension obligation bonds. When you look at our total unfunded liability, so now we're looking at the opposite. COPERS, the liability has decreased over the last couple of years. And when you look at PSPRS, we did have a slight increase last year to again, roughly around $3 billion. Again, if you compare us to the 10 largest cities, even though we have a significant liability, we're still lower compared to LA, New York, Chicago, and Dallas. Again, Houston and Philadelphia look low, but they've actually paid off their pension with pension obligation bonds. So part of the state law requires us to look at our assets and liabilities and then put that on the website. So on PSPRS, the latest actuarial report shows that the assets are $2 billion. The liabilities are $5 billion. The difference between those numbers is the unfunded liability, which is $3 billion. And so the funded ratio is 41%. On COPERS, the unfunded liability is $1.7 billion, and we are at 60.64%. We also have some relatively insignificant unfunded liabilities associated with EORP, which is our elected officials of 8.7 million. And PSPRS Tier 3 is 7.5 million. So now that we know what our liabilities are, we'll look forward on how we're going to pay these liabilities down over time. So when you look at PSPRS, you can see we'll be 100% funded by 2041. Again, that starts with our total liability of about $3 billion, and we pay that down over the next 23 years. On COPERS, you can see we're fully funded by 2038, although we do have until 2039. So we have, again, 100% funded over the next 21 years. So even though we have these large liabilities, the one thing that the council has always done is we need to take in consideration the quality of services that we provide our citizens and balance that with our future pension obligations. And the city's current strategy has been to manage these pensions in a way that's affordable and sustainable and fair to all of our citizens. So it's really a balancing act between quality of services and our annual budget associated with our long-term liabilities. And so with that, we'll start with our pension policy, what staff is recommending. And again, this really is in line with the actuarial study that's done. For PSPRS, we're proposing that you maintain an ARC of 100%. It's also required by state law. We establish or we maintain the pension reserve fund, which is currently at $35 million. And then we evaluate at the end of the year, the budget versus the actuals, and take in consideration any surplus to go towards PSPRS reserve or paying down PSPRS directly. And then we'd be at 100% funded by 2041. On COPERS, we would maintain 100% of the ARC. On COPERS, we do have the flexibility of perhaps using our enterprise funds, and we'll continue to look at that as an option. And again, it'll be 100% funded by 2039. So staff recommendation at this time is to formally be in accordance with the state law and accept our assets and liabilities, approve our funding goals. And again, this would have to be posted on the website by July 1st of 2019. We would have to review this policy annually per the most up-to-date actuarial analysis. However, if something happens, like a new revenue source, the council can revise this policy at any time. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, Jim? Yeah, you're in charge.
Sal.
Hey.
I forgot.
That's okay. So one of the questions I've got here is, does this also, when we're adopting the policy, does it mean that we're also adopting the policy that was done in the past? The addition of the $2.1 billion, the 25-year repayment that was added to the debt? I want to make sure because I couldn't support it if it does.
Vice Mayor, Councilman DeCecio. The council's policy is the 25-year amortization period on PSPRS. And so this policy reflects that, which is now 23 years. And I believe, yes, so that would be reflected in this as the council's current policy.
Thank you. That's why I couldn't support it because I didn't support it back then because it added over $2 billion toward debt to do that. The other part of it, too, is I really think that you ought to show a range of debt because that will determine our policy. One, that is better than the, what, 7.4% return that you're looking at? If you were to put more of a, like, I think it's very clear, I'm pushing an initiative that allows us to use different numbers. And that different number ought to be in here where you look at a 10-year average. So that way, you look at that, then you make determinations on what our policy could be. Something's a little more conservative as a number rather than 7.4% as a return, which, you know, maybe we hit it in the last couple of years, but over a 10-year average, it doesn't. It's about 5.5%. So, you know, I'm going to be voting no anyways just because of the adoption of the extended, but I really think that there should be a more realistic number than what we're using. Just because everybody else uses it doesn't make it so. Doesn't mean that anyone's number is correct. It just means that you ought to be looking at a range of numbers that will determine your policy. I'm glad the state passed that law because then it forces every local government to... to address the pension problem. I really do. I think it's fantastic, because now we have to actually think about it. And think about it means you have to act on it, and acting on it means you have to develop some type of policy. But at the end of the day, I really think that we ought to be using other numbers, too. So we look at a range of numbers that are out there, and those range of numbers will tell us where we ought to be as a city, and whether or not we're going to be hitting a faster crisis that's going to end in 2041 or 2038, or is it going to go longer, you know? And that's really what would happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions? Nope. Okay. Roll call. Oh, since we have a recusal.
I think you need a motion in a second first.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Somebody want to make a motion? You don't have to, doll. Speak at once.
Any a motion to move staff recommendation, right?
I will accept any motion at this point, since there's been a reticence to--
I will make that motion, just, but I do, I am a recipient of the COPERS pension, but I am one member of hundreds, probably at this point, thousands of people. So I feel comfortable making the motion per staff.
Second?
Thank you. Further discussion? No cards. Roll call.
Councilman DeCecio?
No.
Councilwoman Guevara?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilman Holkowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waring?
No.
Mayor Williams abstained.
There's a conflict. It shows that Councilwoman Pastor is on the phone.
Maybe she is.
Okay. Okay.
Passes five to two?
Four.
She's still waiting for Councilwoman Pastor.
Is she?
Four.
Yeah, I was going to say, can't be wrong. We know she's on the phone.
She's--
Yeah, I mean--
Lots of people would be on the phone.
I mean, I just, it shows that she's on there. All right. Fails four to two.
We will continue to work on this, as the state law requires us to do this. We'll come back with another proposal, and we'll continue to work with the council on this. We have between now and July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes our today's agenda.
I'm sorry.
Oh, is that Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes, I missed the voting piece. Can I vote, or is it too late?
Can she still vote?
Is she vote?
Chris?
Mayor, members of the council, the vote has already been declared, so technically, she could not vote. You could reconsider and take another vote if you chose to.
Okay, thank you.
Right now?
All right.
We don't need to reconsider it right now. Somebody can write a letter, correct? This is frankly exactly what I was trying to avoid.
I'm sorry, I was just in--
That's all right.
I was in the doctor's office.
No, I could see that you were on the phone, that's why. I'm sorry, I didn't know the circumstances, but--
Okay, do we have a recommendation?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, what we'll do is we'll bring an item back on a formal agenda in a couple of weeks, when everyone is present. And we've gotten your direction on this, and we'll have the ability to have you consider another proposal from staff at that point.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.